Call me Jordan. Roll call. I show. Charles Granger's need, I show George Noll, I show Julie Stauffer, I show Dustin Johnson, Suzanne Unbal. I show Derek Jones, town attorney, and I show Lisa Mulaney, treasurer. Stand to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of August 17th, 2016, regular session. We have corrections. Can you get that down? Is there any other corrections?
Motion to accept with one change down in the Christmas decorations to state, Councilmember Unbal, motion to all of our just Vice President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
The motion is second to accept the minutes has changed to read Councilmember Unbal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just have a question, Lisa. Did the council buy the new mums that go in all the flower pots? Was the counselor?
Yes, it was part of my flower budget.
Does each organization or businessman, are they to keep them watered? Or should they water? We've got four or five of them right now that just look sick. The last two or three days it's been so hot.
Yes.
So shall we, Jane and I, take water and try?
I talked to Jane about that today and I told her that the businesses that are there have been contacted to water. She understands that the ones on her block, not everybody is there.
Right.
There's no businesses in that block really.
Right.
So she has offered to water those.
Okay.
Julie is taking care of two on her block. Dustin's taking care of two on his. The barbershop, the barber shop, and Jay's have all been notified.
Okay.
And it looks sad. And Julie has been notified. Julie that has a here so on.
Okay. Alright, that's final. Thank you.
You know what? Old business, attorney report.
Everything I have to talk about appears elsewhere in the agenda and the very next item on the agenda is the RMC matter. So I don't really have anything to report, but I certainly have things to talk about as they come up on the agenda, so with your permission, I'll just move into that RMC matter.
Alright.
I had sent an email to the council late last week, I think it was. We're basically at the point where RMC is asking for an essence of proposal, a formal proposal from the town, so they can act upon that as well. They have a board meeting on September 12th, and I think the invitation here is to, in essence, speed this process up or to get something moving. But what it is, it's been discussed, and I think it's, I don't see Jim or Jamie either one here tonight, but I know where they stand, that they're comfortable with providing the colonial estate subdivision, calling the dividing line between the two service territories, calling that dividing line Heritage Street, which is what they're serving now, and what RMC is currently serving as well. But then, we also have circulated a map, and I see everybody's got a copy of that map in their pockets here. It's a little bit maybe tough to decipher what we're looking at on that map, but that yellow highlighted area is, in essence, a portion of the solar park that we would say to RMC, we would assume the territory over that solar park parcel, and we would, in essence, trade for another parcel that's been kind of sectioned out with the red X and the circle that is already currently being served by RMC. Probably just a mistake or an oversight, but we would, in essence, formalize their ability to serve that territory. We would pick up the balance of the solar park, and we would also call Heritage Street the dividing line out of colonial estates. They're asking that that be reduced to a formal proposal to the RMC so that they can act upon that.
So what does Jim, Katie, and Jacob say?
They're in favor of calling Heritage Street the dividing line of colonial estates. They also said while we're at it, in terms of, and I recognize Randy that now you weren't here, now I think about that at that our last meeting. They didn't feel that it was necessarily worth the fight. We could lose some territories, both I hate and any, but they also said that while we're at it, let's kind of fix this little area down here where...
They want a house that sits back that lane.
Correct. We would, in essence, lose that on the map, but we're not serving it right now anyway. But we would definitely gain the entire solar park in terms of that being within the town's service territory.
Means your house is an August electric, yeah, so side of the streets, RMC.
It's gonna be made the same then? Okay.
That's what I'm thinking. We still have water and sewer, but it's just the electric, right?
Nothing to do with water and sewer.
Right.
I suppose there's nothing to do with that.
Just like. And we just need to propose that to them, and a formal, and then they'll be happy?
Well, they're asking that that be made a formal proposal, which really amounts to nothing more than my communicating that to RMC's attorney, saying yes, this was the official action from this meeting, but then it would be recognized as a formal proposal for RMC to say, yes, we will accept that, or no, we'll reject that.
So we just need to accept it?
Well, if we want to make that as a proposal and vote on it, then I can communicate that to their attorney.
I make a motion and have Derek proceed on this.
To help you out and sort the records clear, proceed means to call Heritage Street the dividing line to RMC.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And that's okay, I'm just trying to make it clear for them. And also to, in essence, give up the service territory on the map that's got the red X and the circle, but obtain the balance of the solar park.
Correct.
And I'll second to this proposal. We got a motion in a second to make this our formal proposal. To make the dividing line on Heritage Street. And to let RMC, this currently servicing the house anyways, service the house, and then we get the balance of the solar park. Does that sound alright? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to say aye?
And I guess I don't necessarily have anything, like I said, to report.
So where do you want to draw the line and attorney report?
That's fine.
Well, let's go, we'll just let you take a break and we'll go to the old library. Well, as you can see, the bids are not here, and we're seeing no bids by email, and they were supposed to be here tonight on showing up that building. So, till we get those, I thought, actually, he called me last week, Chet called me last week and said they would have them tonight. So I'll just take all that until we get bids. Green Slope Monument. Okay, back on that. I guess, how far do we want to proceed this fall? Do we just want to get that foundation in, in the proposed plot that we talked about for the park? I told Jim, he hasn't heard anything back in park board either. To just go ahead and set the foundation, if we can, with that flag pole. Get the tree down first, get that set, and be done with that for this year. It wouldn't interfere with the monument that's there. Do we want to go ahead and proceed with the water fountain, or do we want to get the water fountain, not even have it there? Those are the things we need to know, but we need to get the foundation dug and poured if we want to have it set November. If we don't want to have it set November, and you want to set it in the building, you wait till the next year, that's totally up to everybody, but then it's going to be a pain about, so. What'd you find out about that?
I haven't been successful.
No? I would have said, doesn't surprise.
No, and I've tried searching online, but I knocked the best of that.
I don't...
Without paying for a service.
I don't think that, as long as we wouldn't deface, I mean, as long as we still have their plaque on a flagpole, I don't think.
That's...
I mean, I was moving it from point A to point B. I mean, we're not destroying it or changing nothing.
We're just repositioning.
Right. Yep. So that's how far we want to go. Take that out, or the foundation, get it set, put it on some holding spray, which we're gonna have to anyway, it's too late now to really be doing the rest of it. We have to get the orange and the fire. So I guess, we can't, we gotta have like a stopping place. We can't do it all, because we want to go so far with it. Let's see, we get the tree out, we pull the flagpole, cut, of course, you're gonna cut that same right foundation, get the flagpole off, set that monument there, then we then not set the flagpole till spring. You see what I'm saying? Because then you're gonna be putting it someplace, and oh, we don't like it there, we want to move it over here, just...
We have to have a line on it, then.
So if it was taken down for winter, I, you know, I'm just, I want to say something. I'm not gonna say it. You're gonna lose a couple of points on that one. I was just gonna say, either way you look at it, somebody's gonna be unhappy. But we gotta get the foundation in here the next 30 days, so it can set for 30 days. So that would be my vote to take the flagpole down, set the foundation, and store the flagpole and thing till spring, and then reset it in spring when you decide that you're gonna put in a water fountain. You couldn't extend the sidewalk. Yeah, if you want to do any of that, but just, if everybody's happy with leaving the two monuments where they are, and then build everything around that if you can, I mean, that's gonna be your starting point. We can't say, oh, gosh, we wish we'd moved that, what's that, over here, or we moved it over here. If we're happy with the two monuments here, you can always put the flagpole, you know? You see so many different things in so many different towns, and it's, there's some that you can do, but that would be...
Would that flagpole then be here? It'd be here before matron's day. And if you don't set the monument this year, you're gonna have about seven families down here.
Yeah. So is that your motion? We can do that without park board approval, can't we? Since it's still in the town, because they've never given us their two cents worth. Town owns the property. Right. Not the park board. Right. Well, I don't know how that works.
I think that might be important to the decision, but temporary your motion, so long as the town owns the real estate. Has anybody talked to the park board? Are they on board with this?
Yeah, I mean, the ones that were there have been on board with it. Suzanne?
They didn't have a quorum the night, we walked over, we came to the park board meeting and there was no quorum, so we tried.
You know when the next park board meeting is?
They've had two since then. Have they had another one since then, not your back one?
No, they don't think they did.
There was.
If the town owns the real estate, I understand the park board may govern, control, or manage it, but town property, I understand the park board is what you call under the town, but I would rather get their blessing than step on toes, and I know it's the same town, but you could maybe make your motion again to temper it so long as it's somewhere by the town and with the park board's blessing, I don't know how soon they meet again, but when you move...
There's...
Bob's way, man. Do the 15th. So that's not far off.
Yeah, that's, my motion is to go ahead and remove the flagpole, leave the foundation for the new monument where the, where the flagpole is, as long as we get the blessing from the park board. And if we find out that the property is still ours, we can just go ahead and do it, I guess. I mean, we gotta move on.
Can we ask the park board to move a special meeting?
You still got time, if it's the third, I mean, next Thursday, if it's the third... They're saying, they're saying set concrete, you can make a suggestion, set that monument in the morning if you want to. You can put every one in, it doesn't really have to sit that long, I'm just, that's their recommendation as a monument company. My motion is to go ahead and remove the flagpole, leave the foundation where the flagpole is, store the flagpole till spring, and then we can get deeper into it and get a good idea of where we want our things, so we're not just... Now, do we know, since they're gonna be doing the sidewalk and some other work, is it gonna have time to put that foundation in? I would hope so. Jim said they can. Jim said they would. We got a motion. We got a second, do you know? We got a motion in a second, take the flagpole down, and store it till spring, and set the new foundation where the flagpole currently is, as long as it's okay with the park board. And remove the tree. Before we set the monument, the tree needs to be gone. The pole was set down on... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Cemetery Board. I'm gonna let you step up on this.
I think it's gonna take a little more than just the over to Dustin to move to abolish it. I know that was what was, that's what was done at the last meeting, I don't think that's really effective to abolish or vacate the cemetery board. Looking at the statutes, it's easy to see the statutes to ski how to create the cemetery board, or a board of cemetery regents, as it's called in what I think that we have, but there's no clear statute that says this is the steps or the procedure to abolish or vacate the cemetery board. But statutes do talk about that the city or town may by ordinance transfer control to the cemetery board. And taking a look at the history that we do have and the things that we can find, I know that we've looked for the ordinance before that created the cemetery board, but the closest thing we can find, or that I've been able to find, is something that dates back to 1927, and it's really a document entitled Regulations and Bylaws of the Maple Grove Cemetery Board. And it refers to an ordinance that was adopted by the town on the third day of August in 1927. Now, I don't have that ordinance, I don't know if anybody's got that ordinance, and nobody can seem to find that ordinance, but it would, it would be in conjunction with what the statute says, and I understand we're talking 90 some years ago, but the statute today says you need an ordinance to create a cemetery board. This document says that an ordinance did create the cemetery board, and I'm gonna recommend that you have an ordinance that vacates or repeals or revolishes the cemetery board, and I think that's the best way to go about that. I don't see any specific requirements about publishing any kind of notice or anything like that. And really, all you're doing here is basically who's gonna have the management and control of the cemetery board, if that's what this council decides to do by abolishing the cemetery. I understand now there's one member on the cemetery board?
Yes.
Okay. So it's obviously not a functioning body, and it's not really gonna get much done in that way either. But it's up to the council, if the council wants to abolish the cemetery board, I think it would take an ordinance to do that, but then you're gonna get to run it, manage it.
I suggest you work on our plan. I don't have a problem with cemetery boards. It's kind of like the park board, or any other board. The boards are created to alleviate some of our burden. But if it's not working, it's still our burden. So unless you can drag somebody in there to do it, you see what kind of luck we have. I don't think another board member can serve on it, can they? Oh, George. I don't think so. I forgot to ask you that. Right, two Republicans, two Democrats, and then the... Only a lot in the cemetery. Or be a freeholder in the municipality. I'm doing a quick scan and skim here of this thing, but, and I'm not saying it's not the case, but I'm not seeing political party makes any difference from where the other. Two, two. And again, that's what you get when you try to sit here and skim stuff now. This is not the way to do things. Now, what did you say about me as liaison? What about you as the area? Mentioned that I was actually a member. You are, in essence, the tiebreaking vote. Right. If it comes to that, and that's the end of the statute. That's it. That's it. You sit and listen to all the things they want, they're not gonna ask you questions, and you get to break it through. Never had to. Seen anything about political party? I don't see the statute made.
It's like a house in town.
Or property. Or a little lot.
Yeah, or on the grid.
Just leave it open for now?
I don't like the idea of taking on the extra burden, but the other hand is not working. If we can get people by the next meeting, fine. Then if we don't, maybe then we start looking for abolition. That's hot. Pretty dumb I understand still, because I can't find anywhere where the bylaws were ever adopted.
Well, and that's a separate issue altogether.
Yeah.
But the bylaws are really nothing more than the rules and regulations of the cemetery itself, and that's again just derived from the statute, statute here that grants the cemetery board certain powers. Bylaws are really, and that's a fine name to call, the rules and regulations, that's okay, but bylaws are really something I think everyone, when you hear about a corporation that has bylaws, and that's kind of the document that governs the relationship between shareholders and directors and officers. We don't necessarily have all those positions in the cemetery board, and I think probably the more accurate thing to call the bylaws are the rules and regulations. And certainly, you can have as many rules and regulations, or as few rules and regulations as you want, but that's up to the board, or if the council decides you're gonna run it, manage it, it's up to the council.
What do you think, George? I'm with Suzanne. What do you?
I'm with Suzanne.
I agree with Suzanne. Next meeting. We'll decide at the next meeting what we're gonna do with cemetery board. If you come up on anything else, Derek, let me know.
I don't want this back.
Alright, moving on. Who's your start deferred compensation plan? I think I got this little paper and a pamphlet for a resolution. And I don't know a lot about this. I was just told about it.
Want me to explain it for you? The 457B plan. All employees have a pension, and what this allows them to do, the state will sponsor 457B plan. It's like a 401K at the place where you work. The town can either contribute or not contribute, so they could have a, they could have it set up as a plan, or just the employees can contribute. When the employees contribute, they have the choice of either having it into a pre-tax account where they do it and it's tax deductible, basically, or they can have a Roth, where it's not deductible, but when they retire, they can take the money or take the income from it, it's tax free. But it's basically a government 401K plan. State-sponsored, so there's like a little, or probably no cost to the town to adopt the thing. The main thing, it would be Lisa deducting from their paycheck for contributions.
Thank you, Mark. I was, I was told that there's no cost.
But I didn't pay bucks for it.
All, all they really need is our blessing, conscious resolution. Are they agreement?
Yeah, I had Jamie and Candy sit down with the guy for this, and Jamie says there's very little management fees. He would recommend that we adopt this just on the basis of if we get new employees and they have 401s other places and their management fees are high, they can roll their 401s into something like this and reduce the cost of their management fees.
And also, it's my understanding that even if we wanted to, we could contribute some to...
Up to the, up to your salary per year.
Right. Which is just, I just threw that out there, that's all.
I make a motion to adopt the Hoosier Start Plan.
We got a motion. This is a resolution.
I just brought it forward.
There's actually, appears guys, and I'm just hoping at this, but I think there's a resolution here that they would ask to be signed if you're inclined to participate in a program. Since a resolution must be adopted terminating its participating in a plan, resolution must specify when the participation in the plan is. So you can end the plan if you want to. You can put restrictions on qualifications too, like they have to be here three months before they qualify. If they make less than $1,000 a year, they don't qualify.
I think you can write it forward as just information, if you guys want to look through it some more, and you can refine the resolutions, and then maybe adopt it on the next meeting. I'm okay with that, I'm just wanting to bring it forward as, to help out the employees.
When are they talking about starting this? First meeting?
You can, you can actually start it whenever. You can actually start it whenever. You know, it's all... You just fill in the dates and stuff, but they really want us to get it started as soon as possible so that people could start contributing.
What makes this so much better than just going around getting it from you or whatever?
The investments are gonna have much less management fees because they're gonna be ice shares, number one. Number two, with the 457B, you as a council could say, "Okay, for 2017, we will contribute 2% into the employees' 457B plan." So you can decide if you wanna contribute for the employees, not contribute. Plus, the IRA you can cash out, this thing number you get out of unless they quit employment. So they have to keep their fingers off of it a little bit longer, George.
I can't get mine, right, unless I quit. Can't do anything on it. I'll second our motion, just so you keep talking about it. So I'll just say, "Is there any more discussion?" So there's no resolution here, right? This is like a question here, state... Adoption Agreement.
Yeah. The resolution is on the first two pages, first three pages, and then the agreement for the employer is on the rest of it.
I see it in the back.
Yes. So we could adopt it as... Resolution 2016-11. Does it have a state number?
The main number there somewhere you could call if you wanna get, which I would recommend it.
Yes.
Ask for the packet of investments they offer.
We can also have... The guy would be willing to come in and talk to the council if they would like. He just wanted me to kinda bring it forward. My husband had it when he worked for Indot. Most of your state, all of your state employment has it, so...
You do have some options, of course, too. As Mark was saying, you're gonna have to select that at some point if you participate and execute the resolution, so...
You wanna workshop, we can do that.
I like the idea of a workshop. Get some of the employees, their feedback, what they would like.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to have a workshop. Think we need to find out the investments. Few things we should find out. We do have a motion in a second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Aye. We went through the motions, but we're gonna have a workshop. We're not gonna do it as of now until you get all your information.
Yeah, I'm checking myself over.
Yeah, so I'm just...
She's just gonna... Usually vote for your own motion.
Opposed? Opposed. Randy? All opposed to the head of the...
I guess I oppose for the workshop.
I oppose for the workshop. Okay, moving on, board openings.
Marshall County Tourism Cemetery Board has three openings. One Republican and two Democrat.
They're crap, Dad. You just know, they're not Republican, they're crap.
I thought they were. Dustin, I think, yeah, I don't know that there's any necessary political affiliation for the cemetery board.
That's interesting.
Quick look on that.
Thanks. And a planning commission. Do we still have redevelopment? There's one under redevelopment? I didn't think we did. And a BZA.
No more than two-member residents, a plan may be members of the same political party.
That's what I thought.
I see 231465-11. All right, George is right there. Not more than two residents, same political party.
Sorry. Still can't use Democrats or Republicans, because you can be... Green, litany, a green, yeah, you can.
Any other old business? Mars'?
Yes. I forgot to make copies. I guess this is for all our old business, the Marshall County EDC report. I can either give you the report orally, or I can make copies later and get into it, because I forgot to make copies.
We'll just take you under new business. We'll just take you under new business, because it's the report for the month, right?
Yep. Okay, so, I'll wait.
Oh, we're done with old business? I just said...
So we're not through new business?
Yeah. IRA said new business.
All right, well, I wasn't paying attention.
That's all right.
Under marketing, Gary turned the ITAMCO building with Gary Niedig, and they looked at some things and did some talk, along with he did a meet and greet with Consolidated Containers with Steve Bell, the plant manager. Under product development, residential development, he met with Suzanne Unval, Mark Vanderweil, and owner of Colonial Estates. I forgot to ask him what that was all about, but you know tanks, so you share it with me later. Regional Development Authority, we had an RDA meeting. RDA from Northern Central Indiana votes to approve regional cities' funding request. That's where a lot of the projects that were sent into regions, some were approved, some were not approved, but I'll find out more about that this Friday morning at our Marshall County EDC meeting. He's been working on the Marathon Gas Station property. And he's lining up some banks. He's had some lender meetings with IAB Financial Inc. here. Working on the Argus marketing video. All video filming is complete. The video is in post-production, whatever post-production means. So I guess we're getting toward the end of that one. Comprehensive Plan update on the comp plan with MACOD and Marshall County EDC at the Argus Council Meeting on August 3rd. MACOD Economic Development's activity, a comprehensive plan they've been working on. And the Steering Committee meets September the 12th. You're on that, right? Internal Communications, he attended the Argus Council Meeting, and then, of course, this is the August report.
I was prepared. Any other?
Any question is... Well, it goes on, it's not detailed.
Any questions? All right. Any other new business?
Can I go back to citizens' input real quick? It might be new, but it's all business. But this is something that was in the paper, I believe, and had to do with back when we were having our elections. It's been a sore subject. It was a letter that went out against one of the people that was running, and the prosecutor's office is asking if anybody got the letter against Patty Jones, if they would call. At least I know that the people are against that kind of thing, I guess you wanna call it. I got one of those letters. I called, told them I got the letter, I would testify in court that I got the letter. I don't know what you wanna call it, slanderous or whatever. You need to read the article that they wrote so that you can get the exact wording you want. And it doesn't mean that there had to be 100 letters written. Like in my household, the letter came to my household, there's three of us that vote. That's three people. So there's three of 100 that's already called. I know about five other people in town, I don't know anybody else, but if you got the letter, at least just call and let them know that the citizens of Argus don't really go for this. Because it could happen next election to any one of us. It's just propaganda bull. So I push you to call if you got the letter. Numbers, 574-935-8666. That's all I got.
Thanks, George. Any other new business? Claims, 979 through 1,059.
The total docket for September 7th, 2016 is $342,276. The top five claims are claim 1,003 for Infop for $180,569.71. Claim number 988 for payroll, number 17 for $32,715.34. Claim number 992 for Tracy Thayer Construction for $13,770.2. Claim number 1,005 for United Healthcare at $12,854.48. Claim number 1,001, Annex or Power Solutions for $12,488.75. Those top five claims total $252,398.30, which is 73% of this total docket. There is an error in your docket. For gamblers. I'm not exactly sure of the number. I apologize.
1,022?
Yeah, 1,022. That one was paid on the last docket when Jim went in for knee surgery, somebody pulled another invoice off of his desk and put it into my bill payment. So I caught it, and I wanted to let you know that I have voided, since voided that check.
Oh, no, the sign.
It got too hot, and they think that... They replaced a temperature sensor on the sign, but they're saying that... Our sign is black, and it's been a very hot summer, and they're thinking that they may have to replace the two fans that are in it. If that happens, you're looking at $6,000 to $8,000. So right now, we're just living with the temperature sensor. During the fair, they said it was 61 degrees outside.
Oops.
Yeah, what did we do?
With magnetic...
So they did temporary fixes, they put out the counters and stuff like that to try and fix it for now. It keeps shutting off at odd times, just randomly shuts off.
To your server.
The timeline was, it was losing time, so...
Can anyone call and ask to put something on the sign?
Yes.
So we will put anything that they want asked?
Within reason. I mean, we're not gonna put, "Please vote for Suzanne for Town Council" on the sign, you know what I mean? Because that wouldn't be fair. I'd have to put everybody on there, so...
Or just, you say within reason.
I guess, you know, if the council really objected to anything that I would put on the sign, then they're more than welcome to voice that concern. I normally do it for nonprofits and like the school functions, stuff like that, blood drives. I don't normally get into anything political or...
The concerned citizens?
I was told that that is a legitimate nonprofit that has been formed and that they have invited school board members to their meetings. You know, it's not just...
That is a non-profit?
That's what I've been told, so... And that they are actually, I work for citizens, and they're concerned about saving the schools. So I didn't foresee it being a problem. I have a school board member that works here, and he didn't have a problem with me putting it on the sign, so... I did run it by...
I went to the meeting, and they seemed to have one option, didn't I?
I mean, well, if you don't want me to put it on the sign anymore, I...
Back up one step. I'll make a motion to accept claims with the change you pointed out.
Got a motion and a second to accept the claims with the change that Lisa pointed out with... Impulse to get for? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Push it carries. All right. Did you wanna keep on this, or you wanna do it after the meeting?
Make a talk after this.
Okay.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll say, "Need a motion and a second to adjourn."
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.